Like to call the meeting order? Mrs. Burns, oh, sorry. Mrs. Burns, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mr. Allen is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Boyle, Ms. Boyle?
Present.
Ms. Hellenback?
Present.
Mr. Kuwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and school safety and security. The district mission statement: "The Neshamity community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. I do want to point out that our artwork here in the boardroom changes every month, and the artwork that's on display here, believe it or not, is middle school student artwork. We're only a handful of weeks into the new school year, and you see some phenomenal pieces here from the two teachers, Ms. Todd and Mr. Wallerstein. And not only are they nice from their artistic standpoint, but you see also a lot of history intertwined with the art, historical figures, historical places. And the work that our students do in that art room isn't just art-focused, it's also interdisciplinary in nature. So we commend them for the work, we commend them for the choices that they made in terms of what they brought forward here, and some great work on the part of our students. And it goes as far as already doing some 3D work. You see some work with clay that our students are doing, and the clay is going to be fired ultimately in kilns. Our kids have wonderful artistic experiences from elementary school right through the high school, so congratulations to Sandberg. Part of the superintendent's report is an attachment that shows our enrollment for the month of September. That's every first meeting of the month, you'll find enrollment reports. Tomorrow is a walk and bike-to-school day. Last year, Miller focused on this. This year, I know the Buck School, Buck Elementary, we may have others, but they're working with our local police. And so tomorrow morning, if you're in the Buck community, you see more, Buck Elementary, and you see more of our students on the road walking or riding their bike. It's because they're purposely trying to encourage that activity. Anything we can do to stop all those parental cars from coming into our elementary schools? It's a lot. We provide free, it's not really free, you pay for transportation, and we bring a nice yellow vehicle around to your homes and communities. So either take the bus, or walk, or ride a bike. Tomorrow's Walk and Ride a Bike Day. This is fire prevention month, and I'll report out, I'm sure, at the next meeting on many of the elementary school activities associated with fire prevention, and what we are able to do with our local fire officials in terms of educating our students. It's really a wonderful opportunity for our kids to interact with our local fire people and to learn more, and they bring those messages right home to the families, and so that's going to be occurring. The superintendent's in Bucks County visited Harrisburg. It was my first opportunity, newer over here to the Pennsylvania side, they really interact at that face-to-face level. And so we did have the nice opportunity, we met with the governor, we met with the Secretary of Education, Pedro Rivera, and we also met with a lot of the Bucks County legislative representatives. And it's really a nice effort on the part of the county to make sure that those individuals know who we are, know who we serve here in these communities, and work collaboratively with us. We do have a lot of support from our representatives, and it was just a nice opportunity to reinforce that support. I want to congratulate our Queston Select Choir. There are so many good things that happen with our music program that sometimes this might get lost in the shuffle, but they actually submit it to be student performers in an upcoming regional workshop that's going to be held for a 12-state collection of art, or, I'm sorry, music educators. It's the Eastern Division of the NAFME Association, the National Association for Music Educators. And so Pennsylvania and 12 other states, representatives, teachers from those programs are coming to Pittsburgh later in this school year, in April. And our middle school Queston Select Choir was selected out of nearly 200 submissions to be the middle school choral music representative group that's going to perform. Congratulations to them. Another nice event that happened, you're going to hear a little bit about Veterans Day from our Maple Point contingent here for presentations, but part of Veterans Day in Bucks County involves what's called the Tour of Duty, the Bucks County Tour, I'm sorry, Tour of Honor, that goes to Washington DC with veterans. It's a bus trip for veterans to give them a chance to get out, to see the war memorials that are there on the Mall. And this year, something special happened. Our Maple Point students were invited to join them. And so we had 47 Maple Point students who've been very active this school in the celebration of Veterans Day itself. And so it was great for our students to be together with the veterans throughout the day. It was a meaningful day for our students, meaningful day for the veterans, and you'll hear more about what Maple Point has planned. And I should point out that our high school has always been connected to that trip, and that we greet them back when they return to Bucks County and play music as they come back off the bus. And so that happened again this year, and it's a wonderful tradition for our high school to be part of that program as well. I included a couple of snapshots of some physical education activities that are occurring across the district. Nothing special, other than the fact that sometimes we just take for granted good programming that happens here at Neshamity, and physical education is one of those programs. And so I reference here the fact that middle school students in our PE class were out on the bikes one day, one of the days it wasn't raining so far this school year, feels like every day was raining. But out riding bikes with their teacher, one young man had never been on a bike, and I think we saw him two, three days into it, and here he is as a middle school student having that experience for the first time, and really proud of himself, and learning a skill that's going to be an easy lifelong skill, as opposed to playing a team sport. So it's really important for our health and PE programs to do these kinds of things, and you see that happening here routinely, some unique opportunities for our students. Somebody wrote on our Facebook page, "Were the kids told to bring their bikes?" And they don't bring their bikes, that's part of our program. We have those bikes, those mountain bikes are part of our program, both at the middle school and at the high school. And so it's a great opportunity there. And then at the high school, I saw our students doing something I always wished PE students get to do, which is backpacking. You know, just some real physical activity that's part of a regular adult's potential exercise routine. And so here, our kids were out one day, coming out of our building, all bundled up with backpacks for camping, and it's part of a physical activity that they can at least internalize, think about, and maybe choose to do later in adulthood. So I just want to commend our physical education teachers and our program for trying to be innovative and pushing our students in ways that are not the norm, at least not in most schools that you see. So congratulations to all of them. And then finally, Ms. Allison Crisp, you are a first-time award winner who's here in our audience, this is by chance, a teacher at Tewanka, is one of our winners. Congratulations of the We Build Futures Award. Last month, we had a few for our first month of the year. Ms. Crisp from Tewanka, Ron Falatovich is a carpenter maintenance person here in our district, and Anthony Vazini is a teacher at Sandberg, social studies teacher. And our We Build Future Awards, we get out to about 100 people last year. We hope to get to another 100, there's plenty more. We could do 100 again and still have 100 more to find who are doing good work in support of our district mission, and we congratulate the three of them from September as our kickoff award winners for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. This month, Anthony Devlin, the Director of Pupil Services, has some reports on board docs, so if you're interested, you can go and log one of the board docs and look at the report for this month for the Director of Pupil Services. Mr. Jones, I'll turn it back over to you for some presentations.
Okay, hello, everyone. We have three different presentations this evening, and the first is one that I'm really proud to be able to make, and I'll tell this story as best I know it, and there are a few other people who know it better than me, I wasn't there. But this is the second time since I've been here that we're recognizing an adult in our school community who's been in the right place at the right time. Debbie Flick is a music teacher who does some really nice work for us, as all of our music educators do. But it just so happens that we also have the good fortune of assigning her lunch duty. Our teachers go to school for four years in college to learn how to teach, and then when they get out, we also give them some duties, and one of them is a lunch assignment sometimes for some of our staff. And it so happened that back in May, Ms. Flick was the person who was near one of our students who was struggling with some food and couldn't breathe. And Ms. Flick recognized that, and our young lady, Maddie, is it right? Maddie is here with us in the audience, and it was good, we're really glad that not only was Ms. Flick there, but she acted quickly. I heard it took a little bit of time, not maybe the first Heimlich maneuver effort, but the second time, and we were successful in terms of just making sure that Maddie felt comfortable and good, got her to the nurse, everything's fine. As you can see, she's sitting there right in the row, right behind Ms. Flick right now. But I appreciate Maddie coming out with her mom and being here, because we like to just thank Ms. Flick for what she did that day. It was, I'm sure, just a natural inclination. Even though we think about Heimlich maneuver, I was going to research this and find out how long has that been around. We all know it, right? But how many of us are forced really into a situation where it's really important for us to be able to do it, too? We do teach our students, that's another thing in our health and PE program, that's part of our curriculum. And I don't know, so many of our teachers are graduates of Neshamity, Ms. Flick. Really? Look at that. The odds are very high, the odds are high. Could you please come up? We'd like to congratulate you. Thank you so much. So my support person, or community relations person, happens to have a day off, and it's very rare for him not to be here every day, every hour. He left two certificates, I think it was important for me to give you both, one's flaming and one's not. Thank you so much. It actually says, I'm sorry, Debbie Flick, music teacher, Queston Middle School, presented to her in deep gratitude for her quick thought and action applying the Heimlich maneuver to the city of Sault Ste. Louis. On October 9th, 2018, it's only a million of what other, I'm sold, I'm not sure. Looking at a picture of a substitute photographer. Are you good from that far away? Okay. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Glad you're here.
Sure? If you did look at the Stevie's mom, thank you so much. The next presentation, Mrs. Foley is here, actually, with two students from Maple Point. And are you saying any words, Mrs. Foley? You're saying no words. And since I'm out without my script, remind me, I got, I want to say Derek. I want to say Sean. And Nicolette, Nikki. Who's the first?
They're together.
Together. And this is about our veterans program here at Maple Point. We have two Maple Point students here who are going to give you an invitation, we're going to announce an invitation.
Good evening, I am Nikki Di Stefano.
And I am Sean Curley.
Maple Point Middle School will be holding its annual Veterans Day ceremony on Friday, November 9th, 2018. This is a wonderful way for our students and community to show appreciation for the sacrifices that our local veterans have made, and to celebrate the courage our veterans have shown in defending our country.
The Maple Point staff and students would like to invite veterans in our community to attend the celebration at Maple Point Middle School the afternoon of November 9th. Attendees should arrive at the auditorium lobby at 12:30 PM for refreshments and registration. The ceremony will begin at 1 PM. Veterans who are interested in attending should contact Maple Point Middle School at (215) 809-6230, or register in the main office at Maple Point. Thank you.
Eighth graders? Yes, so you've seen this program before? Are all of the students there? Who's at the program?
Eighth graders.
Just eighth graders? Okay. The reason I say I'm asking the students is because it is a powerful, one of the more powerful programs I've ever been to. If you're hearing this announcement, we do, I forget that we broadcast. So if you're hearing it by tape, and you have a veteran in your family, I highly, highly encourage you to have them reach out to the school, let them know that you're coming, and participate in that program. I know the veterans who come truly walk away saying it was a meaningful day, it was a very important, they're so glad that they marked it on their calendar and made it part of what they experienced that year. And so please, if you know someone, let them know that we're having this program, because it's worth, it's worth spending your morning with us. Sean and Nicolette, I have certificates here, I know that you're thinking, "Well, why am I having..." That was hard to do. It's hard to stand up in front of the audience here and to make that announcement. We thank you for coming out, you're an important part of the program, and we like this as a reminder for the two of you for coming out this evening. Thank you so much. And then finally, our third presentation is what we would like to do this year is spotlight our elementary schools. And so we do presentations at our work sessions, so for six of our work sessions this year, we're going to have six of our elementary schools come forward. So this is our first kickoff one, this is our Tewanka Elementary School, our newest elementary school. And Mr. Palmer, principal, I'm turning the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, board members, for inviting Tewanka to come first. I'm going to give a brief, quick overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to the real stars here that have come out to help me. Tewanka's K to 4, approximately 760 students, 46 teachers, 85 staff, two BCIU classes, and we are a school-wide Title I school. When Mr. Stanley asked me to do this presentation, obviously, we wanted to highlight something that's going on with the students and staff, but he also challenged and said, "What makes Tewanka different from other places?" And I think the clear example of that is our building. And one of the unique things that we have in our building is the pod spaces, grade-level areas. Instead of just having a hallway in between classes, we have a pod in between classes. And it's a great educational space, teaching space, that we use for a variety of different activities. So I have just a little slideshow here of some of the things that we've done throughout our first two years here. We've got a third-grade Halloween party going on, we've got a little Thanksgiving activity going on, we've had some sing-alongs, we do grade-level assemblies in there, we've had a parent night hosted, we have another parent university night coming up on October 30th. We've had high school students come out and give presentations to our elementary school students, the teachers love decorating their area of the pod for different celebrations. We've had students give presentations to family members, and here's a little archaeological dig kind of going on in the pod area, gives the teachers and students more space to spread out. There's one of our superkids coming to visit to give a presentation. Some other activities, and most recently, Queston coming out to talk to our fourth graders about community involvement through our Interact Club. So this pod space, great use of it. At first, I don't think we knew what to do with it, but now that we've had it, I think we couldn't, you know, exist without it there. So I want to thank everyone that made that possible. Also, I want to thank the Board for their investment in technology. Here's some examples of the students using that money that the Board has put in, in all different types of ways, and we continue to learn as in elementary, we're starting year two of the one-to-one basically deployment that the middle schools have had. But again, that allows us to go out into that pod space and kind of spread out with different centers and different stations, and explore all of the aspects of technology. One of the things that we started was a weather station project-based learning, and this is where I'm going to turn it over to our stars here and their presentation. We have two teachers, Mrs. Crisp and Mrs. Fidelli, and then we have two weather ladies here, Adeline and Maya, and we're going to turn it over to them.
Hi, I'm Megan Fidelli, and I teach first grade at Tewanka.
Allison Crisp, first grade at Tewanka.
Hi, my name is Adeline Green, and I am a second grader at Tewanka Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Maya Kepanski, and I'm a second grader from Tewanka Elementary School.
Entry event. Tewanka principal visits a first grade class and asks about a problem with children not prepared for recess. We discovered a couple things about the weather, and then we asked, "How can we help?" Questions from our students. What are tornadoes? Why does it rain? What makes a rainbow? When will it snow? What makes snow? Why is thunder so loud? Can lightning strike you?
So after we came up with those questions, their job was to scan QR codes for different weather types, and they're actually going to show you how they did that. We have some QR codes here and some QR codes there, and add people that remain.
So this is just a little bit of an overview of what project-based learning's about. There's several components, but we're just going to give you a snapshot. The students actually came up with those questions, and then they did some research on the iPads, and they collaborated in teams, and had to write the answers, okay, what are the different types of weathers, and how is that going to help us with the question that the principal came in and asked for help with?
They had a worksheet where they had to write one fact that they learned about each of the different types of weather, and then we brought them together as a class, and we discussed what did we learn.
And then we went back to our original question and asked, "How are those things going to help us? Do you really need to know right now if thunder is going to be out there and lightning strike for recess? We wouldn't let them go out for recess if that happened." So then we had to narrow it down. What do they really, really need to know in order to answer that question the principal wanted to know? So then we started studying temperature, and there are four components. They looked at the thermometers, which included math.
So another thing that we did was, we reached out to NBC News, and we were fortunate enough to have Brittany Ship come to our school and visit us, and she wrote a book called "The Meteorologist in Me," and that's just a book about her dream, and never to give up on your dreams, and to always push for what you want to do. And her visit really inspired our students. I think, leading up to her visit, we saw so much more interest in weather, kids were bringing in projects to show her, so involving the community really helped take off our project. We were very fortunate to get a grant for project-based learning, so in Mr. Palmer's slideshow before, I'm not sure if you saw the TVs, but we ordered two TVs to put outside the first grade pod. And our goal this year is to, and you'll see in this video, our goal is to utilize the green screen that we have, and we have an app, and the students will be reporting the weather for the week. And Maya and Addie actually made a video using last week's weather.
Hi, my name is Adeline Green.
And my name is Maya Kepanski.
And we are weather reporters from Tewanka Elementary School. On Wednesday, it will be 77 degrees.
And it will be sunny.
On Thursday, it will be 82 degrees.
It will be sunny.
On Friday, it will be 70 degrees.
It'll be raining.
On Saturday, it will be 69 degrees.
It'll be raining.
On Sunday, it will be 77 degrees.
It'll be raining.
Hey, Maya, what should we wear to school this week?
We should wear a light t-shirt with shorts, but be prepared to have your umbrella, because some days it's going some days it's going to rain.
Have a great week!
So I really appreciate the fact that Principal Palmer was trying to think about, like, what separates Tuwanka, because all of our schools do try to stay connected to the common district purpose, the common district mission. And yet, at the same time, you do identify yourself uniquely as a school community. And I think he really did hit on an interesting point, the physical setup. And I know the board members who were on the board at the time designing that building with those pods, it was done purposefully. And the teachers have done a wonderful job figuring out how to use that space. Principal Palmer indicated that he really allowed for them to have some choice in how they'd end up using that space. And that choice, you heard Ms. Crisp talk about giving the kids choice in project. And that's part of what we're trying to do, is to allow for our students to have choice. We try to model that. Our teachers had some choice in how to use that space. It's become an important part of that new school community. But I also have to point out that the project-based learning is a new piece of the puzzle, too. And some of our teachers have jumped more aggressively into the first-year effort. And I have to applaud you two ladies for what you were able to do with your first graders. You can see here how much more impactful it is to do this kind of work than to have them do the old-school worksheet that we might remember from our first-grade days. To be thinking and questioning and trying to come up with solutions and then figure out how we're going to make that real is really what that project-based learning is all about. You two ladies were phenomenal, you young ladies here. I think that you have a career potential. It's not easy to come here. We have a certificate for the two of you that we would like to give to you two so that you could remember today. And we'll get a picture with you and your teachers and your principal as well. Thank you so much, ladies.
All right, this brings us to the first public comment section, although that's a tough act to follow, so I'm not sure who wants to come up. So, Mrs. Burns, anyone?
There's no one.
Okay. That being said, we'll keep moving. Mrs. Hollenbeck, personnel?
Resolve that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of support staff. Do you want me to read each name?
No.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Piratana. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Okay. The following items were up, are up for approval at the public meeting at the end of this month. 3.01, American Education Week. 3.02, ten overnight trips. 3.03, budget transfers. And that's it. Brings us to committee reports. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Our next meeting for business operations is November 7th, 6:30, right here in this room. We will be discussing food services. So anybody interested, please come on out and join us. Thank you.
Educational development, Ms. Boyle?
Our next meeting will be October 16th, right here in the boardroom at 6:30. The agenda to be announced.
Facilities and planning, Mr. Sullivan will take that. We met last week, and we discussed a number of topics. One of them being that we are requesting a demographic study, a nationwide, district-wide demographic study to see what the demographics of the district look like since the last one was done approximately five years ago. We talked about facilities. We talked about busing. We covered a lot of different topics. And the next meeting is at some date in November, and I don't remember what it is. November 14th. Our meeting last, our first meeting was held at Herbert Hoover, and we're going to do rotational meetings at the different schools. And the next one's going to be a proquesting on the 14th, so this way we get to see what the schools look like. Okay. Policy, Ms. Boyle?
Our last meeting was on October 2nd, which we discussed the different policies. And I think, I don't believe that our next meeting had been set aside.
While you're there, could you take the IU board, too?
Okay, October 16th as well. And the IU told me today that their agenda had not been determined yet.
Thank you. Neshamani Education Foundation?
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Chris Stanley for this update. I appreciate that. The foundation board met on October 8th. Current fundraisers include an Eagles ticket raffle, a Flyers ticket promotion, and a Bertucci's Dinner for Dollars event on November 6th and 7th. Many grant applications were sent to all district staff members, and the deadline for submissions is November 2nd. An employee donation campaign to increase the number of recurring donations has been a huge success at the four schools visited so far, and the board thanks all those generous staff members that signed up. An alumni committee meeting was held on October 2nd. Turnout was light, but those that did attend were enthusiastic and had some great new ideas. The next foundation board meeting will be held Monday, November 12th, 4:00 p.m. at Maple Point. Please attend. Thank you.
November 12th? We will have to...
Site to be determined? And posted. Thank you.
PSBA liaison, Mr. Piratana?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Last meeting, I spoke about a Senate Bill 1095. Mr. Jones provided some synopsis. Currently, it's, to my understanding, it's been voted out. It's awaiting its full passage in the House, and then hopefully it'll be passed on to the governor, where he's indicated he will sign it. And then we will have some direction for quite a few years now on the graduation requirement and put all that to bed. And I know every year, it's a, an issue for some parents and children, especially in the years past with the graduation project they had to do. So hopefully, the state's finally going to put this to bed and give us some definition on that we will be able to stand by for quite a few years. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Kowits, the tech board?
Sure. So with, we were able to pass over the summer, as you remember, the operating agreement. The newest thing that we're discussing at length at the moment is the process by which students are admitted to the tech school. So we've gotten excellent feedback from the superintendents, from all of our feeder schools. We've talked to, we've gotten feedback from several of the educators at the school. And of course, we're mulling over, gee, do we, how much do we base upon, do we want to consider in terms of, right now, we have a process by which there's a lottery, and certain students get in. And then there's a second process. We're looking to see, maybe it makes sense to have our process first and then decide, do these, do these students actually make a cut? Do we employ something like perhaps a probationary year? There's a lot of back and forth right now, and there are a lot of different opinions that were floating around, looking to see what comes out in the wash at the end. But that's where we are at the moment, and we'll continue those deliberations.
Thank you. That brings us to the second public comment period. You don't have to raise your hand, Steve.
Good evening. I'm Steve Verdis. I live in the villages of Flowers Mill. I was reading the board documents, and two things jumped out at me. One is this walking to school initiative. And to me, it jumped out because years ago, I had spoken to the board about a concept that was called a walking school bus. And it was more years ago than I can remember. But it's an interesting concept, if you ever wanted to follow up on it. And the other was Mr. Devlin's report, which I had a question. In his report, he talked about how continuing, the board's continuing to bring back additional special ed classes. And I was wondering how has that been working out so far as saving money and the busing situations? That's all. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone have any future topics?
I have one future topic. At our policy meeting on October 2nd, I brought up with the committee that I've noticed that some other locally school districts are starting to use YouTube as a method for them to replay the board meetings. There's still people that do not have, you know, cable TV. They still rely on broadcast. You can only see the replays on the cable channels of Comcast and Verizon. And not only that, they cycle every two weeks. You know, you can't go back and look at a, you know, three months ago or six months ago. I sent a message to Mr. Jones. He said it is something that we can do viably. I just put it in front of the full board. I don't know how we have to approach this. I don't know if you need to make a motion. I don't know if it's just something that the board agrees, the administration does. You know, I'd like to see us do it. I think it creates better transparency. I think we should create a, an archive for people to view it. I don't know how difficult that is. I guess we would have to talk with Mr. Stanley's staff. And I would suggest that if we do, we probably should archive, you know, back two years to when Mr. Jones started and move forward. And that way, when they're ready to be posted, you know, people can view them at their leisure. So I just put it in front of the board for future discussion, and I think it's something we should, we should do.
Thank you. Any, anyone have any board comment? And you were so sure on the PSB report. I wonder if it wants to be on YouTube.
I'd like to thank our students from Maple Point, Sean and Nikki, on their Veterans Day presentation. As Mr. Jones mentioned, it's very difficult to get up and talk in front of a crowd sometimes, and they did some, for some people, they did a great job. I was just knocked out by our Tuwanka students' presentation. I just thought that was outstanding. The two young ladies from Tuwanka was, was it Maya was one and?
Maddie.
Maddie?
Adely.
Adely was the other one. Just fantastic. And the way they spoke for second graders, I mean, I thought that was amazing. And you see how they were, you know, just doing the iPad thing? And I still can't even figure out how to turn those things on, let alone, you know, play something on it. I thought that was, that was, that was really great. Mr. Sullivan reported back on his facilities meeting that he chairs. I think that's a great thing. We started that committee. And when you see a presentation like was shown from Tuwanka, while the facility, you know, is impressive and it's newer and it has these things that other schools don't have, you know, that's great, and it's something, you know, we want to continue. But I don't want people to get lost in forgetting it's, every school has the same ability to do these things. It's really the administration in building and the teachers more than not that make it happen and provide these students with the ability to do these different type of projects. And without them, it doesn't matter what facility that we have, it wouldn't matter. But on that note, too, this board hasn't forgotten that we are constantly looking at ways to continue to update and upgrade our facilities. And I think this is the reason why Mr. Sullivan decided to form this committee, so that, you know, besides maintaining them, we can also look towards the future and plan for maybe new facilities or increasing facilities, whatever we need. It just allows us to be more responsive. And I just thought overall, that was a great presentation. And I know we got off to a bad start this year on, you know, with our hires. I'm glad to see that we were able to put those hires forward, get them going, all food service workers. I understand there's five more to come. I'm glad we were able to fill them. And I'm looking forward to, hopefully, the end of this month, we'll have, hopefully, bus drivers on our, on our, on our list. We have some challenges getting enough drivers. CDL's extremely difficult to find new drivers. So we're doing our best. I know I talked to Mr. Traska, and Barb's department is working hard to, you know, find people, just, you got to find them, you got to get them certified, and you got to get them on the road. It's time-consuming. So for those people out there struggling with the buses, just hang in there. We're doing our best. And I thank our transportation department for working hard and getting it done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really enjoyed all three presentations. I think it's just amazing to see the variety of activities going on at all levels. And I really enjoy seeing the elementary students at such a young age doing project-based learning. That and problem-based learning is huge in helping them understand the world around us. It's a great STEM, but it doesn't have to be STEM. It could be, it could be anything. I got it in today. So yeah, I made, I made my quota. But I really think it was fantastic. But above and beyond that, again, their presentation skills, they made it look easy, right? I think, I think everyone should have that opportunity to be able to present something like that at that, starting at that early level. So yeah, well done. And the other thing was, I wanted to commend, I know we got them brand-new uniforms this year, but man, the Neshamani marching band, those guys, those guys really brought it home. You know, they actually had a few competitions so far. They won their first two. And I think it just needs to be mentioned. I think it's great. They put a lot of time into, I, one of my kids is in the marching band. As a parent, I know what kind of time they put in, you know, you got the Friday night game, and then they're away all day Saturday doing these competitions. And they're, I hardly ever see them anymore. But you know what? It's, it's, it's great, and it just shows what hard work can really do and the result it can produce. So very excited about it.
Thank you. Okay. No one else? I'd like to say, I'd like to present to, they were very good, and I know how to dress tomorrow now, too, so I don't have to go on and find out.
Wear a hat.
And wear a hat. And wear a hat. And wear a hat. With my hair. Okay. Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.